Our most dear, kind, gracious, heavenly Father, we thank Thee for the opportunity that we have to meet together as a Grand City Council, with the Grand City Council. We're grateful to be able to be a part of our government and to have the freedoms that we have in our country. We are thankful for the blessings that we have in this area, especially for the moisture that Thou has set. It's been a blessing to our farmers and ranchers. We are grateful for the privilege that we have to live in this beautiful area. And we ask for Thy blessings to be upon our city council as they deliberate tonight, that they may have Thy Spirit to be with them, that they may have discernment and wisdom, that as they make these decisions, that they will be guided from on high. And we ask for these blessings humbly, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. We call this meeting to order. 601, roll call, please.
Mayor Hicks.
Ready.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Vasquez.
Here.
Councilor Lucero.
Here.
Councilor Padilla.
As the records show, that Mr. Padilla is out sick, and we're all going to keep him in our prayers. Please stand and join me in the pleasurable leadet.
I would like you to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, before we approve the agenda, item number 10, I would like to move, to Mr. Lucero. And since he's an elected official, he's going to look at his complex and see what's going on there. And I don't blame him.
Good.
Okay. I mean, because somebody is going to say, "Well, you're out of my room."
Sounds familiar.
Yeah, it sounds very familiar.
Sounds familiar.
Okay, so with that move number 10, I will entertain the motion to approve the leadet.
Make the motion to approve the leadet.
Second.
Mr. Secretary.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yeah.
Councilor Vasquez. Councilor Lucero. Barbara Westen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd love to give a very quick report of the Animal Care Center. The end of the year, we had, the number of animals handled during 2018 was 1,867. Of those 1,203 were from Grants, 262 were from the county. Laguna had 291, and Milan had 111. I think the biggest thing that we have are the number of dogs that were euthanized. There were 353, 128 puppies, 176 cats, 51 kittens. And we do have, so I'm going to go on to those that were, thought it was in here. Of those 1,867 total, we had dispositions of 1,066. Forty-four were dead on arrival, and 708 were euthanized. And then of those totals, we had 499 that were relocated. What that means is they were transported out of our area to another area. So I'm going to just quickly update you on the one for the month of March, and I believe all of the council members have that. They had a total of 31 abandoned animals. Thirty-two were captured, four were dead on arrival, 53 were released by their owner, and five were euthanized. There were two in protective custody. Those are simply being held for the owner because they either can't have them where they're located right now, and that's a temporary thing for that animal. And then there were two bikes that they had, two animals that they had to put in because of bikes. So a total hundred, a total of 129. There were 19 adoptions, seven reclaims, and 40 were transported. And what we've been doing lately with the transports is they're going to Scottsdale, Scottsdale, but I believe they meet in Arizona, close to the New Mexico-Arizona line, one of those small towns. And they're picked up by the group in Scottsdale to transport them on to Scottsdale. We have a serious problem with feral cats. There were 20 that were collected, nine cats were sick, 19, these were euthanized, by the way, 19 due to overcrowding, seven euthanized, and four were injured. So a total of 62 cats that were euthanized. Do you have any questions?
No, I'd like to point out that I know initially, when I saw the numbers for euthanization, I think there's a misconception out there that they're being euthanized because we're overcrowded. Most of the euthanizations are animals that are ill, or they've been brought in by their owner because they're dying of cancer or whatever, and very terminally ill.
And I've used that right there, guys. It is one of the hardest things that I've ever done, is to take my dog over there and leave it for them to euthanize. I said, "Okay."
That's right.
I'm not going to lie, but it was a lot easier than me doing it. Okay?
I agree with you. That's a very difficult thing to do, and we do the other.
And anybody who thinks we don't have a heart, doing that is out of their minds. They ought to go over there and see it done. Look at me, I got goosebumps all over me. I used to help them do it when I had a combat crew. And it's actually, it's gut-wrenching, but sometimes there's just no way around it, guys.
But when we look at the total that are captured in Grants, we have the largest number that are captured in Grants than any other place in the county, any other location in the county. And I'm going to go back and refer to the feral cats that we have. There have been times when I have volunteered to answer the phone, and this elderly lady called several times saying, "I've got these cats that are digging up my yard, and I need some help." And we didn't have any more cages or places to collect them at that point. We didn't have anyone that could go out and help her. And there have been times when the Animal Care Center has gone out and cleaned up her backyard so that it would not attract more. But we do have a serious problem with feral cats.
Questions?
By the way, I should mention that Cindy Reynolds and Sherry are working on the new bylaws for the Animal Care Center, and I understand that that's to be done very shortly. I thank you very much for your time, and...
Thank you, Barbara. We appreciate you volunteering.
Well, you're quite welcome.
Public comment and discussion on our charter compliance, we are not in compliance with the charter. Approval to regular city council meeting minutes from 3:18, 2019. Anybody seen corrections? I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve it. Regular city council meeting at 3:18, 2019.
Second.
Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yeah.
Ms. Vasquez.
Councilor Lucero.
Golf course, Kim. Smile. There you go. That's what we want, right there.
So we've done a lot of changes this year, especially with our bathrooms. It's been in the works with Laura for the last two years. And finally, we've got one done. We're in the process of doing the women's right now. They look great. I mean, I've got compliments already, you know how much of an upgrade it is. Also, this year, we got new golf carts. They've been great.
They're brand-new.
Brand-new. Along with it, we made the golfers sign a waiver.
Good.
And we assigned carts out with tags, so that way we know if it comes back damaged, we get to charge them, which we've already had to do once.
Good.
So, you know, it's worked out for us pretty well. Snack bar's starting to pick up a little bit, which is good. The help with Chris, getting it out on Facebook, you know, we're getting it out there, we're getting busier, which is nice. The pump station, you know, when I first started, I learned that we didn't have all four pumps running, and that's why we're getting a lot of water leaks and stuck heads, broken sprinklers. So this year, we got a 25 horse coming in and a 60 horse running, so it should cut down on the water leaks, which is good for us, so we can pay attention to such as, the mayor brought to my attention, number 12, which has bald spots. Which has been in the works for the last couple of years, just with the drought and then the treatment plant, with the water being, you know, we were limited last year, so we really couldn't do, we had to put it on the back burner. But this year, as soon as the spring nights warm up to where they should be, we're going to resaw it and throw some seed down at the same time, so we can get those full. Our sand, our sand traps, I know those have been a big issue because of the weeds. But this year, I have number 18 as my project. We're going to dig it all out, and we have sand that we have cleaned up that we use for aerating, so what we have left over, we're going to redo that sand trap, kind of clean it up pretty well. We do have a couple of big tournaments coming in, which are the New Mexico Seniors, which they'll bring about 50 golfers in. That's May 6th. New this year is a women's group coming out of the North, which is May 13th. They only play nine holes, but they're going to come here, play, and eat, along with the New Mexico Seniors. So that's a lot of fun. And then closer to August, we'll have the Colorado Seniors come down, and they played with us last year. So those are the big things we've got going on.
So Kim, do you have tournaments every weekend?
I'm pretty close. We do have our tournament schedule up on the website. They're not as popular as they used to be, but we try to get out as many as we can. We're putting more towards the fall. That way, you know, people in the fall keep enticed to keep coming out. You know, it dies down in July, September comes, people still want to play tournaments, so we're trying to push them towards that way now.
Questions? Cindy.
Hanny?
Rick?
Well, there's been some, some of the golfers approached me, and I talked to someone about, you know, we have an annual green screen. They approached me about, you know, having carts rented out on an annual basis as well, if there's some type of cost that you can apply to that on an annual basis. Is that something that we can consider?
I'm against that right now. I'll tell you that right up front, because what we use that money for is to pay for the golf carts. And if we start cutting down, we're paying on the golf carts, that's less coming to the city, period. You guys got a great deal out there right now, the way it is, and we're not going to do that. That will never make the agenda, guys. Sorry. I mean, that's just, that's a no-no. That's going back towards that free golf stuff, and we're not going to do that.
It's not free.
No, it's not free, but it's cutting the cost away from us paying for what we need to pay for out there. And it's increasing the cost on the city, no matter how you look at it.
Put the numbers together?
You betcha. Once you, once you do that, it's just like if we were to charge you guys every time you played golf, instead of a year-round free at $500, it'd cost you about $2,000, $3,000.
Well, how did you approve the green fees?
We did it right here.
Well, what was the advantage to that?
To approve any green fees? Because you've got to pay for golf, Rick.
Right.
Okay?
Well, you've got to pay for golf carts, too.
Yeah, but we're not going to do it like that.
What's the difference?
The difference is that you're cutting out the payment to the golf carts. You're cutting it down more.
You're cutting the payment to the green fees, too.
Yeah, but that was for you guys, not for the golf carts. You're actually supposed to be out there walking. When we gave free golf away, hey, no.
I'm not talking about me.
Okay?
I'm talking about all.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the public. I'm talking about everybody out there that doesn't play golf.
Well, all of those guys don't walk.
That's my point, buddy. You've still got to pay for it, Rick.
That's right. You still got to pay for your green fees, too.
Yeah, you do. And to give us...
But you have an annual, you have an annual fee for that, right?
That's not happening, buddy. Come up with your proposal and present it to me, and we'll see where we go with that. Okay? Come up with a proposal.
Kim, we're going to run some numbers?
And get it for me.
And see what, just see some numbers for how these local golfers pay for their golf carts per week or per year, whatever that, how you want to do it.
Well, Laura did come to me with that, to be honest with you. And I looked at it, things like our EveryDayers, they would pay off, it depends on the fee you charge them. Say like, you know, Carlos McCovey comes five to six days a week, you charge him $400 extra on top of his pass, that'll be paid off within 30 days.
Well, you're right.
The revenue would be kind of hard to make up for that payment.
You have to make that revenue up.
Yeah, but you, you know, you're not, I don't think that's a realistic number, because these guys do play year-round, and during the portion of maybe four or five months, they're playing maybe two or three times a week, if that, during the winter, right?
No, we get a lot more than that, just depending on the winter. You know, that would be nice if we could ever incorporate that, but I have to disagree with you.
Okay.
With the, the cost of the cart.
It was just, it was, it was just, it was brought up to me by somebody's golfer because of the annual fee for, for green fees. They thought it would be...
Not cost-effective, buddy.
Be something that we could look at for golf carts.
I mean, I'd be happy to run the numbers with you, but it's kind of hard.
Run the numbers, run the numbers on, say, I don't know, four or five rounds a week, and see what that comes to.
Okay.
And evaluate it out.
I'll lie before you tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you, Tiffany. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. I just wanted to just speak real briefly. You should have before you our quarterly numbers. You'll see three different months, January, February, March, and then there's a synopsis indicating the numbers of the last, the incident reports that we take. You'll see the January, for January, we've got, we've got 150 incident reports. For that same month, we had 1,400 calls for service. So in February, we had 131 incident reports. That doesn't, these don't include crashes. In that same month, we had about 1,240-something calls for service. And then in March, we've got, so probably we've had, we had 132. This was a short, I took these numbers early, but 132 incident reports. You'll see on there, there's homicides, of course, there's fraudulent rapes, aggravated assaults, it's broken down. There's burglaries, larcenies on the first, on the page indicating the quarterly report. You may ask yourself, okay, so 150 for the month, you guys have 18 officers, eh, you can't be that busy. But what belies those numbers is that those are actual reports. The reason I gave you the calls for service is only about 10% of our calls for service actually end up with a report. And we're probably underreporting, and we're, I'm working with my two lieutenants now to fix that, because in the past, the PD has done what they call, predominantly have done, is what they call city items. And so rather than take a report on your stolen lawnmower because you don't know where it's at, and we don't have any evidence where it's at, GPD before has said, "Well, we're into a city item until we get evidence." But that was a way, basically, of kicking the can down the road. And so what we're doing now is we're starting to report more than what used to be. So what I'd also like to show you is that, that in that, we have 18 officers, including myself, but what really and truly what we have is we have one chief, two lieutenants, and right now, I've got two detectives. One is part-time narcotics, we're trying to get a narcotics program off the ground, and I talked to you all about this briefly sometime back, trying to go forward with, with changing the way we're doing things, trying to get on the front end of law enforcement rather than just responding to calls, responding to the radio all day long. So really and truly, what we have is we have 13 officers responding to calls. So out of those 13, almost 1,400 calls for service in a month, there's about 100 calls per officer during that time. So the officers stay pretty busy, and the thing is, is these numbers that you're seeing on these three separate months, those are everything the dispatch is saying my officers are going to. The arrest numbers I question because they say arrested hold is only, say, 14, but at the end, there's also warrant arrest, and it's split up kind of haphazardly. So we've been busy. We had, we've had three homicides, one was a double homicide in the beginning of this year, one, you know, those are the last few months. And then we've got, we get a lot of assaults and lots of calls for service that we, it ties up officer time. And we're changing things. I'll be changing the format of this report every quarter, but anything you guys might have questions on, maybe you've looked at it and there's something you might want to know about?
Go ahead.
Okay. I grew up with little red dots where there were the burglaries and the auto thefts, that kind of thing. Do we have something like that for Grants?
Little red dots, like in, like a map, you mean?
Yeah, a map. I have the map, I had the map, we had the map of the city.
See, the problem with that is our new records management system doesn't, I don't believe, Lieutenant Chavez, does our, does ITI, can we draw stats by, by incident location? I knew on the old sleuth we could do that, but I don't know that we can on ITI.
We can, I just don't know that the dispatch has been trained in it yet, and that they're capable of doing.
So we'll, we'll all look into that.
There you go.
I don't know if it's going to be red dots, but we can definitely...
It doesn't have to be red dots.
We can definitely show you stats. Right.
So I bet, just from your own observation, you guys probably know where the hot spots are.
Well, I'll tell you the problem, honestly, is neighborhoods, we get a lot of house burglaries, and that's because we get a lot of foot traffic. And so the guys are constantly stopping folks. The thing is, in this great State of the Union, right, in this United States of America, I have to have reasonable suspicion that you've committed a crime, because if I stop you from walking down the street, you don't have to talk to my officer. That's just the Constitution of the United States. I can't do that unless I have, unless I have reasonable suspicion that you've committed a crime, just because you're shabby-looking. And so that's the thing, and so they try to find probable cause to, to stop and talk to the guy. If we get a call that, that, you know, Mark Teshama is walking down the street and he's carrying a TV, and he just came out of somebody's house, we can, we can make that stop. You know what I'm saying? But the problem is, is we see so-and-so in his tense beat, and we know so-and-so is threatening.
He's slated it out.
Many burglaries in the past, we can talk to him, but if it's not a consensual, if he says, "Well, I don't talk to you," we, we can't violate his rights. And so that's the thing, is, that's why I'm trying to do more community policing. We're going to be starting a program now. My, my split-shift guys, three-to-three guys, are going to be my traffic units. And so what's going to happen, they're, and it takes away from the call takers, right? They're going to be the guys that are going to be doing all the traffic stops. Their goal is to come out and do traffic, and so, so that we can generate contact, so we can generate exactly that, stopping the people that are in the neighborhoods doing stuff. So we're thinking it's going to, it's going to help us there. It takes away from the call takers, but we're, we're working with what we have, for sure. Yes, ma'am?
Another question. On the, the Boulder Regional Communications Center, like these incident times?
Yes.
Okay? They're different. I know that's probably not your thing, but from the month, the January one...
No.
And the February one, and the March one, they have different categories. They're not...
You're talking about the average, the average stack time, the average...
No, I'm talking about the category, like the first one for January, it has 09 cardiac or respiratory arrest death, and then the first item in February in breathing problems, and then the first one...
Right.
In March is breathing problems, then it goes to fall in March.
That's because...
And then it's like, is it by the call instead of a format?
No, no, it's not a format. What it is, is, it's, it's pretty much alphabetical, and then the numbers come first. So I don't know that 09, or I don't know what 09, or 12, or 13, or 26, or 29, or 31 are, but those are, I guess those are medical calls, chief?
They are.
Yeah, so, so they know those. We just know that we respond to assist on, on, on that call. Right, but, but so once you get down to the A's, you'll see there's alarms, there's animal control, there's, that my guys respond to, there's, and then it goes down. So that's, so it changes. So we may, in other words, so in January, we may have had, what is it, two cardiac incidents, and in February, maybe we didn't have one, so there wouldn't be that.
So would it be on there?
No.
Okay.
Hanny?
Burglaries. I know you guys have lots of burglaries. We do have a lot of burglaries here. What is the conviction rate on burglaries, when you have everything?
Well, you know, on that, I'll tell you the truth. We're working diligently to try to close cases by working with, between the narcotics agent and the detectives, because it's, it all works in together, right? You have your methods, they're breaking into houses and doing, doing these capers, and then you've got them, you know, also on the, on the narc side. So you've got them doing crimes that intermingles. And so I think, I can't tell you what the conviction rate is. I can tell you that we do break a lot of burglaries, but I have to admit, there's a lot of, there's a lot of burglaries, more than I would like, that go unsolved just by, by virtue of, it either is reported late, or we don't have, or there's no evidence at all.
So a burglar breaks into your house, kills your TV, you see him, you know who it is, you know where it went, they call the police. What is, what is your answer to that one?
My answer to that one is to go and, well, how do you know? Number one, I saw him do it. Get a warrant for that guy, get a warrant for his house, and start making things happen. Because ultimately, the only thing I need to, to arrest young Mark with your TV is probable cause. I don't need at that point proof beyond the reasonable doubt. That comes later at trial. So you say, "I saw Mark walking out of my house with a TV, and I know it was Mark, and so I can get a warrant for Mark and his house, and then from there, he's going to want to work with us, and he's going to say, 'Well, yeah, I stole your TV, but I sold it to Mr. Windhorse over here, who, who I know he's selling drugs.'" So, so I'm saying, and so that's, so everything we do is to try to build upon the case, because the TV is a small incident, but ultimately, it turns into something huge, where we've got the fence over here, who's not only has it through TV, but he's also got guns and drugs, and so we try to build that.
And it's not that easy. You know, you think that you have an eyewitness, but do you know how many people don't like their neighbor and would call and say they stole something from their house? You get those probably weekly, right?
Yeah, and, and we get those, we get, we get the moms are reporting on dad because he molested the daughter, and all it is is she wants custody.
Or then you continue on that card.
Right.
Very simple.
Right?
And don't give it up?
Nope. And so, and everything we do has to be within the Constitution...
Right.
...to protect rights, and folks don't realize that, but it, it's not a cop-out. We really do have to work hard to make sure the people's rights are still protected, no matter what.
Well, it sounds like criminals have a better system than we do, okay? So that's not even the point. I, I see a lot of people, I know a lot of people, and...
Again, criminals got a better system.
A lot, a lot of times, the policemen don't even want to take a report, and I want to know why.
Well, you're asking why an officer may not want to take a report at a specific time? I think a lot of that has to do with frustration.
There shouldn't be no frustration, they should be doing your job.
Exactly.
Now, I don't want excuses.
I'm totally, I'm totally on board with you.
I don't want no excuses there.
Exactly. And the thing is, the frustration, I've heard it voiced by some officers, "Well, the court's revolving door, I arrest this guy here for, for intoxication or for whatever, and he's out the next day." But that's just, that's the way it is. And so I am, we are working to change the culture within the PD. I'm sure the citizens have seen the change in the last...
The citizens have heard a lot of people complain about that.
In the last nine months, you, 10 months, you can, you will see that the responses, the response time and the reports taken have gone up because we are working diligently towards that. And so changing officers, individual officers' perception of when, when, and how, and why they need to report a crime.
Crime is a crime, and it should be reported. I've got it, and, and a report should be done.
Exactly.
I, you know, I just don't understand, you keep I, you know, I just don't understand, you keep going back to, "Well, it's just a crime." No, it's not. If, every person that's in here knows that if they get robbed, it's all about them.
Yep, that's right.
And that's the way it should be.
Exactly.
And that's the way everybody should be handled at all times. And not, and not make excuses to, say, "Well, you know, you know, we'll work, we'll come back and get it later if you give me some more knowledge." You did make that, citizen, yeah?
No. And that's the last thing we wanna do, is make any citizen feel like they're second-class to what we got going on. Because the last thing we want is to, "Oh, well, we're not gonna respond to your petty burglary because it's only a TV." And then that same burglar ends up shooting somebody down in Valencia Village later on. And now it's a big crime. What I'd like to do is so that, and that we're diligent in working with our officers, that they know that they need to report domestic violence every time.
And here's, here's, here's what I got on that, okay? We just got through redacting this whole police department just a few months ago. Give them a little bit of time, baby. We got rid of all that crap, okay?
You know, it's been, no, 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 this is, no mayor, no mayor.
We're working on it, Manny. What do you think we did? We changed the whole police department to work on this.
But, you know, and, and the other police department was doing the same thing. So maybe we need.
That's exactly why we fixed it.
I, I'll tell you, in the four and a half years I've been city manager, I have not had one complaint that officers were not taking reports. Now, I've had complaints, but not in a long, long time that officers weren't following up on something that was reported, they hadn't gotten back with people. I have never had a complaint that they've not taken the report.
I have many. And I can actually name them if you want me to, but.
Please do.
The other thing is.
Please do.
The other thing is, you get this thing done and make the citizens feel more comfortable when you take a report and say, "Yeah, I'll come back." That's all I want to do.
I'm totally, I'm totally with you, Mr. Councilman. Totally with you. I, I, I totally agree with you on that.
Rick?
Uh, yeah, can you explain that you said you're gonna take three officers and put them on traffic?
So, we have thirteen patrolmen, that's including patrol sergeants and supervisors, that adds, they're basically the guys that are on the street and they're out taking calls and doing all the stuff. But we're, we're, right now we're running twelve-hour shifts. So, so six in the morning, six in the evening, six in the evening, six in the morning. And then our third shift is three in the evening to three AM. Those two officers, now, there's only one per shift, but those officers will become our traffic guys because trying to, towards the evening when the traffic's really moving.
In the morning?
Oh, yeah, well, morning also, but in the evening is when people start moving into the neighborhoods and start driving. And so what we're trying to do is trying to create an avenue to start making these contacts with some of these undesirables that are driving around and scoping out houses and stuff. And so with that, we'll be getting, well, with more citations becomes more, more everything.
So, with that, are they patrolling residential areas?
Oh, definitely, yeah. Definitely.
Laura?
I had the fire department load an app on my phone, or it's actually a program, and so for a couple of weeks now, I've been getting all the EMS or emergency calls are coming to my phone on a text. And that was a big eye-opener for me, for both fire and police, because I know our police department responds to those emergency calls as well. But the first weekend that I had that on my phone, there were twenty-five calls from Friday night through Sunday. And I was just, I didn't anticipate that there were that many. I thought I had a good feeling for the fire department because they're located here next to City Hall, and I get to hear when they leave for calls during the day. But I, I was shocked, and so it's very, this is very helpful to see what you all deal with on a daily basis and the magnitude for both departments, definitely.
Well, I can speak to this. I work for four different agencies within the county, and Grant's Police Department is the busiest. And so, we're, we're changing this to where it's, it is being reported. And so we're, we'll be increasing that, that report for all the calls for service, to where we're not underreporting for sure. Because that is a concern for me. It is.
Here's what I got. Our K-9 that we used to have that the sheriff flosses wants, make it happen. They don't have no money to give us. Write him the letter. They could've used that when they were chasing the shooters the other night. The dog is being punished because that's all he knows is to work. Let's get that transferred, let's make that happen. Period. They don't have no money, we're not gonna get no money from them. I tried to get it from Tony, I tried to get it from Kate. It's not gonna happen. And all we're doing is we're hurting every citizen in this county that helped pay for that K-9. Because it was paid for with tax dollars. Sure, we let him take it and all that good stuff, whatever. He's a cop at the sheriff now. Make that letter happen, give it to me, I'll sign it, and let's get that dog back to work.
Yes, sir.
That's all I've got. Anything else for the council, for the chief?
Chief, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Next time you come up, I would like to see how many burglaries there've been and how many convictions that you've had.
Arrests.
Arrests you've been arrested.
Okay.
Okay.
Will do.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mark. I hope you got a better explanation of what we're doing now than what we had last week, but.
Two weeks ago.
Counselor Mayor, I have a TV for sale.
Beautiful, Mark, that was beautiful.
Maybe we're over the line.
He's too busy selling drugs.
Oh, that was good, Mark. Okay, go ahead.
My proposal is through CES, it's the eight-hundred block of guys, has failing water and sewer line. AUI scope is to remove and replace the existing eight-inch sewer line, including the manhole in the surfaces, the four-inch water line, new surfaces, new hydrants, and then replace the asphalt on top. The entire project includes tax and the CES fee for a total of three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. The reason for the project is that there is a sewer line that has failed in the area, and we're getting calls on daily basis in that immediate area. I anticipate that this will continue to grow in the Adams area, two-hundred block, and continue through the three-hundred block. We're looking at emergency failings on both the water and the sewer line in that area. So, this proposal is different in the way that the gutter system and the drainage system has been removed, and here it sits before you at the pleasure of the council.
I'm all about it. We're replacing water and sewer lines, we're not putting in ponds and pumping and all that good stuff, okay? So I'm good with this one. Any questions?
Yeah, we talked about it already.
Yeah, we did, we discussed it last.
You're gonna make a motion to approve, uh?
Yeah, I got a question. Why, um, why are we just getting one proposal? Don't we usually get two or three?
Because this one is.
CES.
Is a state contractor.
We talked about that last time. So, so it's something, someone's bringing proof.
Yes, something that. So, we have a couple of them, CES, once facility built, there's a few of them that are on state contract that we're gonna use, because we know we're gonna get the lowest bid anyway.
That's just.
That's right. That's exactly right.
Anything else for the council?
No.
Motion.
I made a motion to approve three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents, that's including the tax.
To AUI. Second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Voskis?
Yes.
Counselor Sereb?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Gunny Garcia and Sergeant Major Barella on another state championship.
Manny just took my win away.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't know if someone was gonna bring it up. I apologize, Mayor.
That's why I call you a congressman.
I, I'm asking for seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents to contract Albuquerque Asphalt Incorporated for the paving of the streets immediately around this building that is lead, is that right? Oh, that's nine-eleven, I apologize. So, lead is technically called nine-eleven, high street, iron avenue, and then the city hall drive path. And so Albuquerque Asphalt is on state contract, and so that's what we're using, that's who we're using. We're also going to use this as a training method, so that way the guys can get out there and watch them pave for a couple of days.
Yeah, and, okay, that's, there you go. We were all on the same page. My question, okay, go ahead, any other questions? Is it gonna fix the drain on the corner?
So that was already approved, TLC will get started next week, and that's gonna be the Valley Gutters.
And then they get done before we do the paint.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve pavement to Albuquerque Asphalt.
I made a motion to approve the seventy thousand, four hundred and seven thirty to Albuquerque Asphalt.
Second.
My second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Voskis? Counselor Sereb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final item, the update for the truck and trailer purchase. We looked into the possibility of an F-450. It does not have the tow capacity for the larger pieces of equipment that we're needing for a truck that's similar in, in the size that was proposed earlier. We're looking at about a hundred and forty-three thousand. This is from the state contract of, of Bruckner's, and so they're all, they're all roughly about the same cost for a semi-truck stripped down just with the wet kit or the hydraulics kit. And then the trailer for the lowboy, that's a custom-built trailer, and that's sixty thousand. And it takes about a year turnaround time to build those things.
And what else? And what else? What else are we doing? Come on, we're doing something else here.
So, so the, sorry, so, um, we.
We know we're not done.
No. So as far as the sweepers, we're trying out a local contract, uh, excuse me, a local vendor, thank you.
But we're waiting to go on the trucks, is what I'm talking about. I, I got the sweepers, I got that message today out in clear.
Yes, sir.
The trucks, July, state.
Yes, sir.
Vid, fence, right?
Yes, so that.
So that we can save about a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
Because we're only gonna be using it to move it around town, right?
Right.
Make my day.
So, so we have, uh, state legislature gave us money.
Yes, to get trucks.
For four trucks.
All we need, okay, so.
But that wasn't for this, right?
No, no, I mean.
Because what we're doing here, and this is what I told the instructor we wanted to do, is to go look at the state vid that goes down in July. So we might want to, when we get to the budget point, throw in fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, so that when we go to the state vid by.
Do you mean the state auction?
Yes.
Auction, D O T.
Where we could be on state trucks that are used, but we're not buying a brand-new one that we're gonna use to drive thirty, forty miles a year.
Okay, and that's actually actually September.
Oh, that's September.
It's, no, this comes out July and it's in September.
So if we need to use other people to move those until then, that's what we'll do.
Okay, yes.
Okay, we gotta call Harry and, and have him rent them, if we gotta call C and E, whoever. That's what we'll do until September, and then we'll make a decision if we're gonna buy brand-new or what we're gonna do.
So, in the meantime, Counselor Voskis, we're trying to see if there's someone in Malon that can work on that sweeper. And there's a possibility.
And the other one we've moved to Albuquerque.
The other one, it's already moved to Albuquerque.
So, C and E, Wednesday morning, we'll move it, uh, to Albuquerque, correct?
I just, well, I, I like to have all the sweepers done in time for the summer.
Yes, sir.
So, on, on these trucks, so what comes with each truck, like this new one?
This is stripped down just with the hydraulic kit on the, on the end, and a, and a trailer hitch.
And that's gonna include the trailer?
That's not the trailer, a hundred and forty-three thousand.
The trailer is a hundred and some thousand two hundred.
So, so this is the one that last meeting was going to be about sixty-five thousand dollars?
Thirty-eight thousand.
No, thirty-eight thousand was the Mr., Mr. Garcia car.
Yes, sixty-five thousand was a new Ford.
Yes, that was thrown out at us, sixty-five thousand dollars, and that's in the minutes.
Yes, and that, that number.
Were recorded in here.
That number didn't jive.
No, that's, that's a.
Because that truck wasn't big enough. Yeah, the, the price of the truck was right, but the truck ain't big enough to do what we needed to do.
So it jumps from sixty-five thousand to a hundred and forty-three to?
That's right.
No, who gave the sixty-five?
I, I did. So that was the F-450.
I don't know shit about vehicles, man.
That was the F-450, and I apologize. I'm, I'm not up on my towing capacity. The F-450 has a max tow capacity of twenty-five thousand dollars. Not big enough. We need thirty-seven thousand, so.
Huge.
Yes, it is, huge.
Well, I was curious what your perspective was gonna be, because I thought that that's way out of our ballpark.
Yes, and that's why I'm saying, we wait for the state auction and see what we got.
Actually, the, yeah, it's.
We wait for the state auction and see what we can get there. Because that's just, that's ridiculous.
But the other thing, I was getting ready to hammer you on that.
Especially like I said, thirty miles a year is about how much.
Yeah, just to move, move it in our own city.
Exactly.
You know, I looked at the truck, I looked at the trailer and everything else, there is no wage setup, there ain't nothing, so that's all right, we have to be in, we spend four hundred thousand dollars before you, you got anything, and we're not gonna do that. So we, we are gonna use C and E wherever we can to move it to Albuquerque, get them back here, because what I read, seen on that semine, kind of brings nothing.
That's right, it's stripped down.
It's stripped down, baby.
So we're not doing that. We're not doing that.
That's why we're waiting for the state auction to see what happens in the state auction, and if we can't get anything there within our price range that we need, then we'll just continue to pay the two, three hundred dollars.
Keep looking.
So we're gonna keep looking. I mean, there's just, we're not gonna jump out and spend that kind of money.
I hate to see a three hundred thousand dollar truck and trailer sit outside and wasted away and used it only maybe five times a year.
Right.
No.
Thank you for allowing the update.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Keep plugging, man.
Yes, sir.
Keep plugging. This next one is mine, guys, for the funding of the Council of Governments. We cut the funding a while back, we got their attention.
Did you want us to cut the funding?
Yes, and we got their attention.
You got their attention. And now you wanna give them more money?
Yeah, I wanna give them a little back, because they're working for us now, they're doing what they need to do. And we've got an employee over there, assistant director, who just took over for Jeff Cady because he retired. This guy has been so loyal to the council of governments that when they didn't have the money in the account, he would even cash his checks. Okay? And like I said, Jeff Cady's leaving, Evan is taking over. They're working for us, they're working again where before they were just blowing us off. And like I said, we got their attention, they're working, they're actually doing more. I mean, look at what we got in the budget. And it wasn't just because I was up there, it was because they were up there pressing too. And I was in their ear the whole time, we were up there pressing, okay? So I would like to go ahead and reinstate what we took away.
Was that seventeen thousand five hundred?
Yes, for this time, and then, uh, of course, it'll be up again in the budget. Because this is what, we did budget the money, but we didn't give it to them. Okay, so it's in the budget, we don't have to worry about that. Because we budgeted the money, but we only gave them the twenty grand. Okay, so we'll give them the seventeen-five, and then next year it'll be the thirty-seven one, or in July with the budget.
Right.
Okay? Any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to give, uh, funding for the council of government for seventeen thousand five hundred, am I right?
Yes.
My second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Voskis? Councilor Cyril? Thank you guys very much. Next one, jet fuel, holy cow!
So we're due to purchase some more jet fuel for the airport, and of course, it gets resold to people flying in that need to refuel. We've been doing these in advance so that our airport staff are not caught without fuel at any time, so we're due to purchase another load. And when you purchase a big load, you save rather than purchasing smaller ones. So the purchase is for seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
And who are we buying this from? Carver Oil Company?
Yes, they're on the state contract.
And listen, Carver makes jet fuel.
I can almost go buy jet fuel for as cheap as I can regular gas.
Right?
Are you making a profit?
We do make a profit, yes. We sell for more than we purchase it.
Sorry.
Any other questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars for jet fuel for Carver Oil.
My second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Voskis? Councilor Cyril? Febo, next item is removed. Next item after that is Andy Merble. I spoke to him, he wants on this, and I put him on it. Please.
I make a motion to add Andy Merble to the council's board of directors.
Second.
My second.
Second, uh, Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Voskis?
Yes.
Councilor Cyril?
Yes.
The next one is Ralph Chavis. Same thing with him.
I make a motion to approve Ralph Chavis for the council's board of directors.
My second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Merble?
Yes.
I mean, Councilor Voskis, sorry about that. Councilor Cyril. On this, of this board here, Rick, these are the guys that should be bringing that type of proposal to us. That way it doesn't put you...
I'm here talking to guys, so I'm just kind of...
And that way it doesn't put you in the limelight in the newspaper.
I'm not doing all of that. That's what I'm here for.
Okay.
Our, you know, our citizens, so...
Roger Stowe, City Recycling, step up. You wanna talk when the item's up, that item is up. Go ahead, Sidney, we'll see ya. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Reynolds is leading the meeting, and she has a class at the University of New Mexico. Thank you very much, Sidney. Go ahead, Robbie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, city council, and Mr. Manager, our mayor, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'm Roger Stowe. I've taught, uh, I've been a resident of Grant's with my wife for thirteen years, and I've taught at the high school for over five years. And at the high school, I managed the recycling. And I do there both old paper, uh, cans and bottles, but especially cardboard too. And, uh, I'd like to support, or like to recommend the city support any reasonable measure for recycling. I believe it improves quality of life in a certain area, this area especially. And, uh, uh, that also it leads to jobs. I just learned this last year from Julie Bond, as he worked for approximately twenty years at Bio-Papel, McKinley Paper, now Bio-Papel, that... There are, they have a hundred pretty good jobs there. I have a former student working there that I've talked to since...
You're aware that that's where all of our recyclables will go, right?
The cardboard.
Every recyclable we have, all of our plastics go there too.
Bio-Papel?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good.
Okay.
I did not know that. I...
If it wasn't for Bio-Papel, those blue bins that are out there would be gone.
Uh-huh.
Okay? Because there's no place to do it. If you guys didn't see the newspaper this morning, recycling in a crunch, Albuquerque Journal.
Oh, yeah.
It covers Albuquerque, Santa Fe, everything that's going on in these places, and what it's costing them.
I know, I know from... Well, here's the thing about Bio-Papel, they take in a thousand truckloads a month of cardboard.
Oh, yeah, we can't, we can't supply them enough, but we give them everything we've got.
That's great. But I've also seen how much Carver gets thrown out in the city, in businesses, in the dumpsters like there, the post office and so on. And I know there's still quite a bit going to waste, it could be... I think those jobs are great, and let's keep them going. And, uh, uh, and it is important, a hundred good jobs, there's nothing to sneeze at. Uh, also Mitch McGee and his wife Gwen have a e-waste business in Bluewater Acres, that's, I believe, in the county. And, uh, they're making a living off of e-waste too. So he, he used to come to Grant's a couple times a year to collect TVs and monitors and computers and so on, radios, anything, anything that batteries or anything with a cord. And, uh, but it wasn't worth his while, he didn't collect enough. But he could still leave things at the transfer station for them. But he and his wife make a living doing that, so I'd just like to recommend, uh, that the council support Recycle Sibula, a volunteer organization that care about recycling and quality of life here in Grant's. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hollis?
I'm gonna come closer. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, our council members, and, uh, city manager, and all of the employees who came out tonight, I'm glad. I would like to, my name is Hollis Fleischer, I'm the co-coordinator of Recycle Sibula. We are a volunteer organization, we've been in existence for about nine years now, hard to believe. And, uh, we work towards establishing and promoting and educating about recycling in our community. Um, I'd like to just recognize there are a number of our members and also just supporters who came to the meeting tonight because we managed to let them know that we were on the agenda, and I wanna thank the mayor, excuse me, for including us on the agenda so that we can make some proposals and give the council some information. So if the supporters who came would like to stand up, they don't have to, but there are lots of people in the audience who came to support Recycle Sibula.
Thank you for coming to our meeting. Thank you.
So, earlier, Recycle Sibula presented a lot of information to the council in sort of being on an agenda at an earlier time, and I just wanna point out that that still is available to the council. It included an update and a request for financial information. It also included a proposal about pay-as-you-throw, which is a kind of proposal about paying less when you recycle more and you throw things out less. And also, an update and curbside collection proposal from a few years ago. Not everybody was on the council at that time, so we wanted to present it to you just for information about what we do, some details, and also about some possibilities to consider in terms of curbside collection of recyclables. However, we have listened well to you, Mr. Mayor, and to others who have talked to us about what the city is in a position to do and not to do. And so I don't wanna talk about curbside recycling for the residential community tonight. Instead, what I'd like to do is focus on the latest handout that we provided to you tonight, which is a one-page handout entitled "Five Easy Ways for the City of Grants to Support Recycling and Other Green Initiatives." As you know, the state is focusing on trying to do more green initiatives, and I think that listening to what Santa Fe deems important and trying to get some funding and support from Santa Fe is something good for the council to consider. And so we're proposing five ways for the council to support green initiatives and recycling. So I just wanna go through them quickly, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So the first one is actually quite simple. It is to implement recycling at the City of Grants. So there are a lot of locations, office buildings, the golf courts, Double Six Gallery, the airport, uh, the Senior Citizen Center, the library, where right now it does not seem that we are recycling the city. So very simple, get recycling containers, install them at city locations, arrange for the recyclables to be picked up instead of thrown in the trash and dropped off at the drop-off center. Fairly inexpensive way to support the recycling program, being a good example for the rest of the community. Costs for recycling containers could be lower than defrayed through some grant funding, and we certainly would be happy to help the city obtain some grant funding for recycling containers. A big place for recycling containers are the city parks, recreation fields. We've already have some recycling containers installed at the schools, so this is a very easy, inexpensive way to support recycling, for the city to show that the city supports recycling and supports green initiatives. A second suggestion that Recycle Sibula would ask you to consider is to support a second convenient, visible location for recycling. We already have one at Smith's, the Smith's parking lot, that's our main location. There's one in Milan as well, but there are roll-offs for a second location, and the roll-offs were provided by federal grant funding. And we suggest that if Walmart will agree, they did agree a couple years ago, that a second perfect location for the City of Grants and the county would be the Walmart parking lot. This wouldn't cost the city anything, anything more, I'll say that. Obviously, recycling does...
It already cost us.
Recycling does, is a service that does cost money to provide, but we have the containers, there would be the same attendant available to staff the bins at the Walmart location, very visible, lots of traffic, lots of people come in and out there. It's an easy way to just increase the recycling in our community. A third area, and we've talked a little bit about this, is a kind of curbside collection, but it's not, um, it's not residential, it's very narrowly focused to one very good commodity that, as we've said, McKinley count, McKinley Paper does take, and that is a curbside collection of cardboard from businesses and large institutions. Cardboard is a good commodity to recycle, it does bring in funding, obviously the prices fluctuate. However, it supports McKinley Paper more than the other recyclables that they do buy, and it would support, continue to support jobs in our community. Now, we have talked, Recycle Sibula, with Waste Management, who is looking into one possible proposal for curbside collection of commercial cardboard, and we suggest that the, that the, that Waste Management and the city continue to consider what the possibilities would be, the most cost-effective way to collect cardboard. And this would be an initiative, a green initiative, that the city could support without a lot of heartache or trouble. The fourth thing that we suggest is something that the city's already considering, and that is this plastic bag ordinance. That's a great way, not expensive, not a lot of money, but it's a great way to show that we care about our community, we care about it being clean and attractive, we care about recycling and reusing bags, and this is a very easy way for the city to show that we're green. This is an initiative that you're already considering. The last time you talked about it, um, we were asked for some support and assistance, and I wanna report to you that we have gone out and spoken to different community groups, and the response has been overwhelmingly positive. We will continue to do that, they're in favor of it. There were a few concerns raised, but not very significant, and nothing to change the overall perception that this was a really good thing to do, they were in support of it. And so I urge, we urge the city to continue along that path of considering an ordinance regarding plastic bags. And most recently, I spoke with the manager at Smith's, Deirdre, and she indicated that they would even be willing to consider whether they would support the promotion of providing free cloth shopping bags for the short period of time when the ordinance is first rolled out. And that's a very effective way to educate the community and get them on board with that kind of a green initiative. And lastly, um, it's just, we would ask the mayor, because you are in charge of the agenda, to consider putting our request for modest financial support for education and outreach, because we are a volunteer organization, we don't have funding from anywhere, to put it on the agenda as an action item. Now, I do wanna say this, it's a reduced amount that we're requesting, three thousand dollars, because we are also going to other places to ask for funding. So the Village of Milan has indicated that they would like to support our funding request for a thousand to fifteen hundred. Also, we spoke with Kate Fletcher, and the county is in the position to entertain requests for funding now. That doesn't mean that we'll get the funding, but now we're asking the county also to contribute. So we're going everywhere, not just to the city, and we would ask for this modest request for funding, and that funding goes for educational and outreach materials that we give out primarily in schools, at special events for the residents, that explain recycling and give information about recycling. So, I need a sip.
I have Gary Ford in the back from the Solid Waste Authority...
Yes.
Here with us tonight to answer any questions on this. Right now, the City of Grants is costing us fifty-six thousand dollars a year to recycle. Fifty-six thousand dollars is what we give Recycle Sibula to do the recycling, period. Now, you guys brought it here, you implemented it, and this is what it's costing us to do this stuff.
But, but that's not to Recycle Sibula, just to clear the record.
It's to recycle in Sibula County.
Yes, in grants.
Okay, yeah, okay, here's my point. We made two thousand five hundred and seven dollars on sixty-five tons of cardboard. Two thousand five hundred and seven dollars, okay? Seventy dollars and twenty cents on our plastics and a hundred and five bucks on our mixed paper. There is no way this thing is sustainable, guys, no way. And you want us to take all of this stuff and mainstream it? Who is gonna take it to where it needs to go? China is not buying the stuff no more. I've got all of that stuff right here for you. It came out in this morning's journal, Santa Fe, Albuquerque, all of them, the crunch is on. This does not work, and it costs too much. And right now, we've got a minimum wage that's coming down our throat, or they want us to bump it to nine bucks an hour in January, ten fifty by the next January, eleven fifty by the next January, and twelve fifty after that. Right now, eighty-seven percent of our employees out there make less than that. So, and we don't have no money, because we're a nonprofit. We don't have no money to give these people raises, so tipping fees are fixing to go up, your garbage rates are fixing to go up, everything's fixing to go up to pay for this minimum wage increase, and you guys want more money. We already give you more than we give Main Street, the Economic Development, what I'd love to do with that fifty-six thousand dollars is give it to Eileen at the Economic Development and create some jobs in this town. Okay? Because what you're talking about is breaking the City of Grants to create jobs in recycling. We're already paying for one. We're paying for it. The recyclers don't pay for it, the taxpayers did. And now the taxpayers are gonna, and here's my main thing, people on social security, they ain't getting a minimum wage increase, retired educators ain't getting a minimum wage increase, retired cops, retired crash officers, retired firefighters, I don't care who you are unless you're a millionaire that has un-untained stuff in the stock market, you ain't getting a raise. But every price of your services going up over the next five years. Social Security ain't had a raise in how long? Sorry, we give you guys fifty-six thousand dollars, I'm not gonna give you another three. You can write a grant for that, just like you did for those blue bins. Okay? And we put these recycling things out there, we did it in San Mateo, we left it there for a year, we had zero, not one iron put in that blue bin in a year. There's just no way. There's no way to functionally do this. And if you don't believe me, if Albuquerque can't do it, and Santa Fe can't do it, how in the heck is little old Grant's gonna do? There's no way.
May I respond?
You go right ahead and respond.
Thank you. Uh, just for the record, first of all, I wanna say Recycle Sibula is a nonprofit organization that does not receive fifty-six thousand dollars from the City of Grants.
No, but to recycle you do, and this program was started by you guys, okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I continue?
Go ahead, but you're not gonna change the facts.
Mr. Mayor, council, all right. The fifty-six thousand dollars is what goes to the Solid Waste Authority to pay for the recycling program in our, in our county. Gary, in our county?
Yes, in our county, it's all right here, Hollis.
In our county?
I got it right here for you.
The fifty-six thousand comes from the Solid Waste Authority, that's what it costs us.
Right. So, the fifty-six thousand comes from the Solid Waste Authority. Now, we pay the Solid Waste Authority through a number of, through a percentage of taxes...
Who pays them?
Who? Nobody pays them.
Who pays them? Step up there, step up to that mic, Gary, I sit on that board out there, so I know I sit on that board out there, so I know what I'm talking about.
When I say "we," I mean-
We're a nonprofit, we don't get no money.
I mean, the citizens of-
And that's what I just said, the citizens are paying $56,000 already. And you wanted to pay more.
The communities that use the services of the Solid Waste Authority pay for the running of the Solid Waste Authority. That's to run the landfill, that's for all of those services that Gary's shop provides. And how much does it cost to handle the trash that goes to the landfill?
That's what they're paid to do.
The Solid Waste Authority operates completely on tipping fees that we bring in. We do not get tax money from anybody for operations.
But you get tax money for the entity itself, right?
No.
No!
No tax money.
We operate on what we bring in. We create our own budget.
And you charge tipping fees for trash services?
Yes.
Right. And you don't charge any tipping fees for recycling services?
No, that's all we do.
All right. So, it costs the Solid Waste Authority, the Solid Waste Authority has a budget to operate, and the budget is supported by how much they earn in tipping fees. So it's really the tipping fees for trash-
And who pays for tipping fees here?
Let me just finish. The tipping fees that pay for all of the services, the labor, the equipment, the, all of the trash handling that the Solid Waste Authority provides as services for us. And part of what they also provide us as a service is the recycling program. So $56,000 is what the recycling program costs for Sebula County, which comes from tipping fees.
And who pays the tipping fees?
And the tipping fees are paid by all of the people who utilize the services.
Thank you very much.
That's right.
And all those tipping fees are fixing to go up.
In fact, services always cost money. It costs money to process our waste, wastewater treatment plants, trash, paving, all of those things cost services. And all that Recycle Sebula is suggesting is that recycling, instead of just dumping it into a landfill, recycling is a service that we are providing to the residents. And it's an important service that the council should, we hope, continue to support, because a lot of people in this city, in this community, think it's an important service to be provided. A lot of people come to us and ask, "Why aren't they doing curbside pickup? Why aren't they picking up glass?" All sorts of questions. Have you ever considered this?
It's cheaper to pick glass than it is to recycle. Wow, man, you know all this.
In thinking about it, I urge the council to think about recycling as one of the many services that the city provides. And yes, we all pay for those services, because it's important. Because now, you're not allowed to illegally dump into an arroyo, you have to pay for a fee to utilize the sewer system that the city has. You're not allowed to dump your trash, you have to pay to have your trash picked up-
That's right.
-by the city. Now, recycling is not any different.
Yes, it is.
It's a service, it's an important service. You're helping saving energy, you're saving the earth, you're being responsible, you're being green. That is a service that your citizens want, no matter how much you yell about the fact that it costs. It does cost.
We're done here, right now, we're done.
Okay.
Your presentation is over, okay?
Sure.
And here's the bottom line here: how much do you want for recycling? Because what you guys are talking about with that mainstream and all that stuff is in the millions. Ask Albuquerque. We don't have the money, Hollis.
We don't want millions.
We don't have the money.
We don't want millions.
It's over, we're done.
We want a reasonable service.
You've got a service.
We gotta want a reasonable service.
And those of us that recycle do it, Hollis. You were over there the other day when I took a whole truckload over there.
Yes.
People that recycle, recycle. Those that don't, you're never gonna make them do it. And the cost that it is, is too much for our community, period. And we're not doing it.
We respectfully disagree that it's too much for our community.
There you go, then disagree. Have a great night.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. I do have one last thing, and it's not anything that I'm saying, but I thought that I would play this for you.
We're done.
Hold on, hold on.
Hollis, we are done.
Just listen up.
Chief, would you please remove this woman, please? Thank you very much, guys, I appreciate that.
Hollis, you can't.
Here you go, that's right for you. You know, killer, about this whole situation here? Just leave it here six months out of the year.
For you!
Got it.
Thank you.
Just amazing, man. You know, and here's the thing about us, yeah, take her out of here. You know, here's what's really amazing about this, guys. The people that bring it here, they're not from here. And as for Ms. Hollis, she'll only live here six months out of the year. Okay? She ain't gonna pay for nothing, you know?
I'm not from here, I'm sorry.
She ain't gonna pay nothing.
Everything you said. I know.
It's done. Okay? So on that note, comments from the council? None. Rick, you got any comments? Laura, how about you?
I wanted to announce we have a community cleanup this weekend, on Saturday. Please come and join us as we work for a couple of hours cleaning up the city. We'd love to have everybody come out and spend at least an hour or two working with us. I kind of wanted to get a feel from the council. Over the last several years, there's been the idea of developing a neon park, and the city has looked at a piece of property on Santa Fe Avenue that I believe, the Ratliff, is the Ratliff, or the, you know, the Voyage family?
Right, okay.
I don't remember their name.
The one with the old motel and used to sit in?
I think there's a, it's two plots, but it's down on the west end where you could see, if you have a neon park, you could see it from the interstate. But the gentleman is asking $90,000 for that piece of property. We had it appraised, and it was appraised for over that. So, yeah, so I'm just kind of wondering, is it something you would like for us to pursue? Or would you like us to wait on that? I kind of wanted to get a feel from you all, if you think it's a worthwhile project. The idea, I believe, came up through Main Street years ago when Randy Hoffman was there. And it's been on the Team 66 agenda, which Chris and I are members of. And so we wanted to try to purchase a piece of property and start designing and working on it. It would be paving, and we have some ideas that we could take a lot of our old neon signs down there, refurbish them, and have something that would be a tourist attraction, do some historical information on each sign.
I think it's very important to do that. A neon park is one of the works for the last 10 years.
Right, we've talked about it for ages, so would you like for us to start moving forward on something of that nature?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that. Put it in the budget. Now, this was a park that you would walk through?
Yes.
I'm just like, drive through it.
It would be both. Actually, our idea is that you would drive in, park, and you could turn to Channel 10 or whatever, and it would give you the history of the signs. That way, if it's winter and it's cold, you could still see it in the winter. But then you could also get out and take pictures by the various signs, see them up close. We do a lot of research to see what other places have that are similar.
Yes.
But the first part of it's buying a piece of property and securing a place. And that's, it's the property down, it's just past Charlie's Radiator, but there's two lots.
Los Salavitos?
It's on Akama. It's on the corner of Akama and Santa Fe.
Yeah.
And-
Is it on the east or the west?
West.
It's on west.
The west, it's the longest one toward Happy Avenue.
Yes, and it's between there and Handy Andy, and it's actually, it's actually six lots.
Just on the other side of Charlie's Radiator?
Yes.
I think we need to look on it.
Yeah, go ahead, look at it.
Okay.
We'll put it in the budget. Anything else?
One more thing, are we starting considering a walking trip by the golf course?
Yes.
Yes.
Run her out, but it's a walk.
Yeah.
Because I'm riding my bike, the golf carts, and everything.
Right.
Because I'm not walking, I'm easily dragged by a bike.
That'd be nice, yeah.
Be a nice-
Yeah. I've got a couple things. First, I'd like to apologize to the audience tonight. But when Hollis comes in and accuses me of stuff, I've just had it with her. When Ms. Boyet comes over here and wants to know if I'm telling the truth about our economic tax, where it's going, guys, you have never had a more transparent government in the City of Grants than you have right now. Make no doubt about that, guys. We're not hiding nothing. And if you want to know something, ask me. I will not lie to you. I'll tell you exactly where I'm at with that.
What did she accuse you of?
She accused me of having her on the agenda and taking her off, and it's going on and on. You guys have not been a part of the conversations I've had with her, okay? Just like the other day, when I was over there emptying a whole truckload of recyclables. I mean, it's just amazing. So I apologize for that, okay? But there's no way that we are going to implement something that is going to break the City of Grants, it's going to break our elderly that live here on Social Security. This minimum wage is going to kill them, period. It's going to kill the retired educators. It's going to kill everybody that is on a fixed income, guys, whether we like it or not. I am not against recycling. We are the greenest county in this state, okay? We've got windmills out there, we got a solar mill out there, we got another solar farm coming right here on our city limit, we're putting another windmill out on the other end of town, guys. We are the greenest county in this state. We're doing the recycling that we can, period. And in order for us to go further with that, it's going to cost us an ungodly amount of money that people cannot afford in this town. The tipping fees are going up. I see you saying, "No, no, no." Whatever, you must have a lot of money. My mom lives on Social Security, guys, and she barely makes it. So that's the way it's going to be. The next thing I got is the ROTC, which Mark brought up about winning another state championship. That's just totally awesome. We need to fix that sign on the end of town. Hang it down. So let's fix that sign on the end of town. And the last thing I got, guys, we're looking at, the state's looking at giving us a bunch of money for an indoor rodeo arena, 6,000-seaters, okay? We're looking up there at the rodeo ground, so that's not going to work, okay? And so we're looking at maybe a land swap with the state and putting it in Malam on the other side of the Highway Department, where you got that big lot between the Highway Department. And the house is where Hardy Allen and all those people live. We need about 33 acres for this, to do this project. The state will do a land swap with us. When we get to this point, what I'm going to ask the council for is to purchase a piece of land up here by the rodeo ground for $17,500. And we will exchange it with the state and give it to Malam for that section over there on the other side of the Highway Department to build that 6,000-seat arena. You know, if you ride off the highway, everybody will see it. Concrete floor, we can use it for rodeos, for motorcycle racing, whatever, concerts, whatever. My point being is, I don't care where that facility's built, I want it built. Okay, we looked at it some 30 years ago, well, now it's time to come, because the state legislature has the money to give us right now. They got a million to give us upfront. They're projecting another big windfall next year because of the oil and gas, okay? Which the governor's trying to kill, which I don't understand at all, because it pays for 60% of our budget in the state of Mexico. But, that being said, when that time comes, I'm going to ask the council for $17,500 to purchase that piece of land, so we can exchange it with the state. And then, I mean, sure, Malam's going to love to have the arena, but the City of Grants is going to be the benefit of the motels, everything that goes with it, the gasoline purchases, all of that stuff, because Malam doesn't have any motels. And they want the facility. I don't care where it goes, as long as it goes in Sebula County, guys. It will be perfect for us.
Have they considered upgrading the roof as we have now?
It's not big enough, we need 33 acres. And we were looking at purchasing more ground around there, but it's floodplain. Okay, the state will take floodplain, though. That's the key. When we do a land exchange, the state will take it. So that's coming, that's coming down the pipe, hopefully, okay? The last thing I got is with the Economic Development, for you green people, for the recyclers, we are trying to push through a plastics recycling plant that would turn it into natural gas and diesel. We're looking at everything we can to create jobs. We're looking at the old greenhouse, we're looking at everything we possibly can, guys, we're working with the state. Hopefully, the county will go with us on the greenhouse this time, and maybe we can end up with that and start putting some people back to work in this town. Because it's killing us. Our county and our schools is down by 150 children. That's how many families have left this town in the last year. Why? There's no jobs here, guys. There's no jobs. And until we start something that brings in jobs, we need to pay attention to what we're doing with our money, because we got in the paper, we're advertising a heavy equipment operator for $10.50. In a year and a half, that's minimum wage, guys. Think about that. And who is going to be a heavy equipment operator for minimum wage?
Not going to happen.
You might as well accept it. Everything is fixing to go through the wolf roof with this minimum wage, guys. Everything. Your garbage pickup, everything's going up. And that's why we're not doing this, okay? And I don't want to take a motion close meeting?
Take a motion to close the meeting.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you for coming, have a good night.